... sixteen Roll Street in Reading on Thursday, May fourteenth at seven p.m. on the petition of David Chua who seeks a variance under sections five one two, five two one A, B, and C, and five two two of the zoning bylaws in order to construct a single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot. I guess I need this. On the property located at fifty Lothrup Road in Reading, this is a prior variance case number twelve dash eleven that has lapsed. I'll, unless there's an objection, I'll dispense with the reading of the abutters list other than to say that they've all been notified, as well as the Board of Selectmen, the Town Clerk, the Police Department, Fire Department, Building Department, Conservation Commission, Health Department, Assessor's Office, Building Engineering Division, CPDC, and members and associated members of the Reading Zoning Board of Appeals, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, infield, North Reading, Stoneham, Woburn, and Wilmington. Testimony given before this board is under oath, so if you're going to speak this evening, I would appreciate if you'd stand up and raise your right hand. I swear the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. The answer is I do.
I do.
Thank you. We'll turn the floor over to you for the moment and let us know what you are wanting and planning to do and what you're asking us for.
Before you start, you need to make him aware.
Yeah, I should reiterate that. Before this meeting, you were made aware of the fact that we only have four members tonight, and you need a unanimous four zero approval to go forward, okay? And I think you decided after not being told that, that you wanted to move forward anyway.
Yes.
So, okay, so that's why we're here tonight.
Right.
You just have to put that on the record, so.
Right.
I understand.
Okay.
Okay, well, obviously, time has elapsed. It's been two years tomorrow that I bought the lot from the town. And initially, as a builder, I was gonna spec and put a house on it. In the back of my mind, my wife was thinking that we were gonna build our house there. So about, I'd say a little over a year ago, we decided, you know, let's do it, let's build our house. And we, you know, started to look at houses and get some ideas, and let's see an architect. And it's been a lot of work to basically come up with a plan that one that we, not only did we love, but that we could afford. The first set of plans, we basically threw them back and said we couldn't afford to build a house. And so finally, oh, believe it or not, all through the winter, you know, we were going back and forth tweaking and, you know, convincing and trying to keep the same style, and basically time just lapsed. And I was completely unaware that it would expire. Honestly, when I bought the lot from the town, I just didn't know it expired. I didn't know it was an expiration for me. And here we are. So when I went to see Glenn, Glenn said that I needed to come back, so we took the necessary steps and basically, that's why I'm here.
Okay. Well, basically, the variance has.
The variance has lapsed, correct. So, I mean, you know, I went into, with the plans and saying, okay, Glenn, I finally have, you know, have the plans, and this is a pretty good idea of what we want to do. And that's when he said, well, this is what you need to do now. Hopefully try to get the, you know, instead of the initial one that you have, back it up, and hopefully get started and not have any delays.
Okay. Thank you. You want to add anything?
I don't.
Okay. As you know, Glenn is not here this evening, but he did give us a memorandum which I would like to read into the record at this time. The applicant purchased this property from the town of Reading in order to construct a new single-family dwelling. This variance case twelve dash eleven was granted by this board. The applicant did not apply for his building permit within the required timeframe, and the variance did expire. This application, case fifteen dash oh five, is exactly for the same purpose. I do not have any issues or concerns with this application to construct a single-family dwelling. Signed, Glenn Redden. Okay? I'll start with you, Eric. Do you have any questions or comments to make with regard to this request?
Um, no, I mean, just the obvious one that the applicant has addressed, which is the lapse of time, but, I mean, it certainly, you know, it's there for a reason, but, I mean, it seems like, you know, you've, you know, provided a reasonable, you know, response to that.
John?
Well, since this is a brand-new, we're treating it as a brand-new hearing, um, I think it would be appropriate to have the applicant go through his request for the variance to get it on the record, even though he's been here, been there, the board has done that. But this is a brand-new hearing, so it means to go on the record.
Okay, you know what he's referring to. There are four criteria for us granting a variance, okay? And I think it was in your application, and we just, I think we just requested that you walk us through that, okay?
I'm sorry, you want me to what?
Just walk us through the justification for the variance, for the four criteria that are required to get a variance.
Sure, I mean.
Okay? I'm referring to the variance criteria sheet right here.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, you want me to read it?
Well, you can just walk us through it and give us your justification as to why you feel you're compliant, okay, which is basically what's in here, okay?
Oh, okay.
See, you were before the board, the board granted the variance, the variance lapses. So you had to re-advertise, come back in, this is a brand-new hearing.
Right.
Even though you had before, it lapses, this is a brand-new hearing.
Okay.
So it has to go on the record, you have to go and justify the criteria for the variance. And what you have here that I noticed, you cited five one two, five two one A, B, and C, um, five two two, bylaws have changed since then, so a lot of that has changed. And I think in terms of the parts of the, of the requirements under the sections of the bylaw, they probably haven't changed appreciably, they just are reorganized.
They've been renumbered pretty much.
Putting in charts and so forth and so on. So I think, at least for my part of it, all I want you to do is to walk us through the variance aspect of it, which you did back in two thousand and twelve.
Well, honestly, I bought the, the town did it, I didn't.
Town did it, yeah.
I bought the lot from the town. I had nothing, I, you know, I mean.
Oh, that's right.
The justification for the variance was done by Peter and Town Council at that time. They're the ones that came before us for that previous authorization to use that property for single housing only, remember? So this is the first time that this gentleman's been for us.
Yeah, yeah, prior to that, I didn't know anything that went wrong.
I noticed in here that the justification for the variance, the verbiage is a lot like what was in the previous one.
It's basically a copy.
In fact, it's essentially a carbon copy of it.
Glenn had mentioned, what I'm really trying to do is just, time has elapsed, I want basically the same, you know, conditions and just start again. Just try to renew it.
Yeah, I read through this, and I compared it to what was in the variance criteria justification the last time.
Yes.
And it's almost a verbiage.
It is.
Copy of what the town came before us with two years ago.
Yes, that's what we're trying to do.
It looks like you just.
At one point, I don't remember, I said there was no forty B or something in that, certainly not trying to do anything like that, or just try to build, you know, our home. Initially, it was gonna be on spec, and now it's gonna be our home. So, I mean, I, other than the verbiage that's in there, I didn't even, I honestly didn't read it. We just took it as trying to renew, you know, and tried to put the same conditions, I guess, that were on.
Your approach was taking what was, is now is.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. So how much more do you want to get into that one, John?
Just by stating that the first criteria is the soil condition, shape, and topography of the property which was presented, and the major portion of it is that you only have forty feet of frontage, which is not even consistent with the forty eight, which is the minimum of the fifty feet of frontage. However, you have well beyond the five thousand square feet, and beyond that point, you're not looking for any dimensional control requests. The second criteria basically is that there's a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, because the property would not be able to build upon in this present form. So it would be a loss to you if you came back before this board right now and asked for variance, and were denied the variance because you sank a lot of money into it, so the biggest portion of it is the financial aspect of it.
Right, yes.
The third section is that it, to grant, to really grant it would not be substantially detrimental to the public good. You're in an area that has all smaller lots, you're hidden, I shouldn't say hidden, but you're back behind those lots off of County Road, so that there should not be any impact on neighborhood. And the last one was that you, by granted release, we wouldn't be nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance of the town of Reading. And again, going back, you have more than the twenty thousand square feet, you have forty feet of frontage entrance, it's not just going to detract from the other houses in the area, because you probably, from what I can see, you will be seen because it's hilly back there unless you're gonna cut it down.
No, yeah, it's gonna sit up and back.
Okay. So that's the only thing I want to get on the record, that there are, the criteria's still here.
I think you just put it on the record.
Exactly. Because there was nobody here to put it on the record.
That's right. You got it, okay.
Okay.
Any other comments, John?
No.
Kathy?
I don't, I have nothing.
Okay. I don't really have any other comment either, other than all of the paragraph references are to the old copy of the zoning law, and I gather that if we're gonna approve this variance or act on it tonight, we'd probably be referencing paragraphs.
I think appropriate paragraphs.
That are in the current version of the law. We need to figure out what those are.
Yep.
I took a shot at it, but I don't know whether you.
And I didn't bring my old book with me either, so I can't.
Okay.
No, I think it's out in the car, so I can go get it.
Well, I walked through it, and just to start the discussion on it, is that it talks about six, it's, what he requested was six point two point one, which is, relates to lot shape, which was, I think it was five one two. It is so, I think the appropriate paragraphs are now six two one lot shape, six two two lot frontage, and six point three table of dimensional controls, all of which are pretty similar, or they're exactly the same as what they were in five one two, five two one, and five two two.
Yep.
Okay? I don't even think they changed, they didn't even change the language in those sub-paragraphs. So I think those are the appropriate paragraphs to be referenced, six two one, six two two, and six point three. That's the only comment I had tonight. Well, there was one other, I guess. If I looked at your plot plan, I guess it's called a proposed site plan.
Yes, yes.
There was a listing in there, one of them which was lot width, and I was trying to figure out where those numbers came from.
Well, I had my survey.
For a twenty-square-foot lot, it was eighty feet, for a thirty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-four square foot, it's a hundred and twenty feet.
Well, is that the current, I mean, the surveyor put that on there, because Glenn wanted some added verbiage, maybe the surveyor put that on there as needing a hundred and forty, that variance would be, in other words, you're saying all the dimensional controls are met except for frontage? I assumed he thought it was one to one, and we only have four.
Yeah, I, I looked at it, and I said it's, it's not, almost not relative.
Right, I think Glenn.
To the decision we're trying, what we're asking us to make, but I just thought I'd raise the question. Okay, since, I could open it up for public opinion, but I'll open it and I'll close it, okay? Any other comments from the board on this case?
No.
If not, I'll entertain a motion. Anyone?
You can do it.
I guess you go over to the U.
Yes, I can.
I move to approve the petition of David Chua who seeks a variance under sections six point two point one, six point two point two, and six point three of the zoning bylaws in order to construct a single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot on the property located at fifty Lothrup Road in Reading, Massachusetts, as shown on the proposed site plan prepared by PJ F. and Associates for Highland Avenue, Wakefield, Mass., dated April twenty seventh, two thousand and fifteen, and stamped by Paul J., is it?
Finocchio.
Finocchio. Professional Lancer Bear?
Yes.
Okay. Do I need to reference the prior variance, or do we need to?
I frankly don't.
You don't have to because it's a brand-new hearing.
No.
Okay.
It's just a whole new situation.
It's a whole new situation, okay, so moved.
Second.
Do we reference the architectural drawings as well?
Oh, we could, yeah.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Can I just make one point?
Yeah.
Yes, you can.
The plan that we have may be tweaked within the, how do I describe it? We're very close, but he might wanna bump out one section because there's a problem with headroom going up the stairs, we might, they had to add a foot, but it still wouldn't meet the dimensional controls. So what I guess I'm asking is, that proposed plot plan, if I need to move that house within dimensional controls, back three feet, forward three feet, or expand the house a couple of feet, I would want to be able to do that within the zone of what was twelve eleven. You know, Glenn, when Glenn said, get me the proposal, I mean, the plans, I emphasized to him that this, we're ninety-nine percent positive, but I had to plot that to begin for the meeting. So it could shift two or three feet, but certainly, not twenty feet or whatever, and it could grow a foot, you know, so I, but I want to say I will maintain the dimensional controls that we were before, in the last case of twelve eleven.
I mean, the key criteria for a variance are the zoning bylaw and the control dimensions on the lot, side setbacks and front, rear setbacks, and height, okay?
Right.
Those are key. Usually reference the architectural drawings simply because that's what you're coming in and asking for, and, so it's just on the record as this is what it is, and so forth, okay?
Okay.
Is it required for this variance request? My sense is it may not be. What's your perception, John? You've been on this more than I.
Well, as long as it falls within the parameters of the setbacks, you're gonna be dealing with the building inspector anyways.
Yeah, and if you're gonna make a tweak here or there, you're gonna do it with his concurrence anyway.
Okay, that's, that's what I, he's.
So I guess, I still don't see a problem with referencing this, but if you want to tweak it a foot here or there, so as long as you're within the bylaws.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see a problem with it.
I mean, the, well, we reference it because of the plan indicating so that if you do vary from that, and the building inspector permits you to do that, it's a new structure, I mean, it's from the ground up, it's not replacing anything. So he's gonna keep you to the setback, he's gonna ask for foundation plan.
Sure.
Everything else before you do it.
Yes.
The only thing that you're close on is what would be considered the front, and that's twenty-two feet away, so you're, you don't have much room to play on that one. The other ones, it appears that you have more than sufficient room unless there is some elevation problems.
Right, and that's where, you know, when we go in there, say we hit a big chunk of ledge, I mean, you know, there's a lot of things in there, and so, literally a day before, I surveyed, you know, plotting on the, you know, computer and trying to put it on there. So that's where I was just a little nervous of if we had to keep it in the exact same spot. But Glenn did say that when I came in to measure that, you know, you'll wanna be able to stay within the dimensional controls and not have to put it right there.
I think what John is saying is that your marginal, your leeway on the front is very short. Ten percent, okay? If you want, if you go beyond that twenty foot, you're back here, okay?
I have an instrument surveying, I'll make sure.
Well, and subject to, as you said, if you hit ledge back there and whatever, the elevation aspect of it determining what that thirty-five feet is.
Oh, that will always stay in effect, right.
Well, it's how it's measured.
Yeah.
So there's two criteria in there for measuring the height. The building inspector's gonna determine that, but if you hit ledge and you want to go up a little bit, we have to take, we have to take your architectures, architects' proposed setback and requirements in here, along with your certified plot plan as being the reference, which is what we're giving you the variance on. If you stay within that envelope in terms of the height also, then, you know, we'll never know it, because the building inspector determined that. However, if there's a problem, as I said, you will be back there.
Yeah, let's hope not.
Let's reference them.
I just want to reference the architectural plans as well. It looks like plans number one.
I think it's one through seven.
Through seven, and they were prepared by Venus Collaborative Architects dated April eighth, is that April six?
April sixth.
April sixth, two thousand and fifteen. So.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
All in favor? It is approved, four zero zero. So if you stand by for a minute, I'll stamp some copies for you, okay?
Okay.
And then there's a twenty-day appeal period. So it's gonna be over a month before you go to the town hall and get started.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And one thing that we did not put in there is our standard conditions.
Huh?
The two conditions, the, submitting everything to the building inspector, the three standard conditions. I was thinking.
That's common, that's common practice anyways.
What, for variance?
No, well, variance, special perm, same thing.
Okay. All right, where have I got here? two thousand and fifteen meeting. I give everybody a minute or two to take a look at them.
I had only one proposed change.
Yep.
That was a paragraph on page two, next to the last line. We're not removing the old pumps, we're just removing the old pricing signage on the pumps.
Good point.
Pricing signage?
Just the signage, pumps are staying there.
Oh, okay.
The static, the static numbers.
Okay.
And that's gonna be replaced with the LED topers.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I didn't see any.
Kathy?
No.
Eric? I wasn't there, but it looks like it was. I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Four zero zero. We've had a lot of, I'll just talk about this, but we've had a lot of conversations or emails back and forth about Robert's rules, whether they apply to this board or not, and I guess there's some ambiguity about it. I would recommend that we not discuss it tonight, and we do it with the full board present.
I agree.
Okay? So I don't think we'd have to vote on that, it's just a suggestion, and I do all agree with that. It should be a full board discussion.
We have to commend Kim and Maureen. Kim?
Oh, amazing.
Amazing.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved?
One second.
All in favor? Four zero zero. Fast. Wow. Well.